You will work out for that internet?
Yes.
You will check it, check the computer, see if it's running.
Started, of all times, let's see.
That's it. Okay. You will work out for that internet?
Yes.
You will check it, check the computer, see if it's running.
Started, of all times, let's see.
That's it. Okay. This up, there is. You will work out for that internet?
Yes.
You will check it, check the computer, see if it's running.
Started. Of all times, let's see.
That's it. Okay. This up, there is. You will work out for that internet?
Yes.
You will check it, check the computer, see if it's running.
Started. Of all times, let's see.
That's it. Okay. This up, there is.
Started. Of all times, let's see. Started. Of all times, let's see.
That's it. Okay. This up, there is. Started. Of all times, let's see. That's it. Okay. This up, there is. Started. Of all times, let's see. That's it. Okay. This up, there is. Started. Of all times, let's see. That's it. Okay. This up, there is. Started. Of all times, let's see. That's it. Okay. This up, there is. Started. Of all times, let's see. That's it. Okay. This up, there is. Started. Of all times, let's see. That's it. Okay. This up, there is. Started. Of all times, let's see. That's it. Okay. This up, there is. Started. Of all times, let's see. Bodata County Board Supervisors will come to order and we will begin as we frequently do with a certification of closed session and this is just documentation that we need to go through to confirm that a closed session that we just had, to confirm that all we did during that closed session is talk on items that were in the resolution to go into closed session. So matter of formality. And I'll begin that process. Be it resolved that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements and only such matters as were identified in the motion to go into closed session were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed session. I'll move for approval of that motion.
Second.
Then moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any one opposed?
We need a roll.
Roll call.
Dave, we need a roll.
Oh, yeah, we need a roll call, though, yeah. Yes.
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 Thank you, folks. Let's do the pleasure of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I found it. We have, I imagine, by, in terms of the number of agenda items, which is, I think, 26, that exceeds the number of agenda items that any of us have seen in many years, so this could be a very busy and long meeting. We'll move it along as quickly as we can. But we should begin, I think, before we get into the, all the activities that may be associated with our agenda, let's just take a moment and pause and reflect. Moment of silence, and there's many things that are worthy of our reflection this week and this month and this year. In particular, it's a good time to think about our departed and dear friends, Tony Zerola. Keep him in your thoughts. And the other thing is, we have nationally, we have some perhaps difficult times coming up, so might be good to reflect on all the things that are good about this nation and all the things that we're fortunate to be able to enjoy. So let's take a moment of silence. Thank you. Now, relative to what I said in the beginning about a long agenda, what, what we're proposing to do is there are certain items, some things are more important than others, obviously, and there are certain items that we could move to the, to the consent agenda, there are some that could be postponed. So let me propose this, we may not have to do this, it may turn out that we'll move along quickly, but if you look at your agenda, item number 11 and number 23 and number 24 are basically provided only for information, so they don't really require board action, so I would propose that we set those aside, reserve the right to discuss them if we finish the meeting at a reasonable time. But looking at the, at the items, number 11 is a drug treatment program to be presented by Mr. Alexander, number 23 is a monthly Apex update, which usually, and probably this month as well, doesn't have too much in the way of significant updates. And then the final one in this category of things that can be, that are for information only, is the ordinance establishing a revenue share for battery storage facilities in lieu of taxation. I have some other adjustments as well, but I will move that those three items, number 11, number 23, and number 24 be regarded for information only. Do I hear a second?
Mr. Chairman, I asked that we could, I have 23 constituents specific about that item, said that as far as that. So I would like to, I would like to see that item stay.
Okay. Any other comments? That leaves number 11 and number 24 that we'll regard as for information only. Any second?
Yes, second.
It's been seconded, you?
Yep.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, well, we'll change the agenda by considering number 11 and number 24, information only. There are two others that can be deferred, number 12, Small Business Assembly Resolution, and number 21 Drug Box Presentation. And they can be deferred to next month. But I'll tell you what I'd like to do, I'd rather, let's see where we are at the end of the meeting, maybe we'll, maybe we'll finish this massive agenda in a reasonable time, so let's put those aside. The third category of cleanup here was consent agenda. The following items can be transferred to the consent agenda if the board so desires. Number 13, Blue Ridge Parkway and Blue Ridge Rising Resolution. And that's, and number 19, Consider Resolutions to Support Corillian Clinic's Kidney Transplant. I propose that those two go under number 20, or go into the consent agenda, so we would be enlarging the consent agenda. I make that proposal in the interest of streamlining the meeting. Any, do I hear a motion?
I'll second that one.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, well, thank you for your patience on that. And the next item is introductions. And the first of the introductions is Julie Phillips.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's my pleasure to introduce you today to Jared Weaver. Jared started with our libraries at the Fincastle Library as a part-time employee in April 2022 and just recently was promoted to a full-time position at that same library branch. Jared has also been working until recently at the Roanoke County Public Libraries as well, so he was doing double duty for quite some time, and two part-time jobs. Prior to his time in libraries, Jared worked at Barnes and Noble, so he brings a combined 13 years' experience in bookstore and public library settings. He's filled roles in customer service, interlibrary loan, research, and young adult programming, including supervising the teen services area in the Roanoke County Public Libraries. In his new role, Jared still wears many hats while adding substantial responsibilities in public communication. So we're excited that Jared has moved into this new role in our library and will be helping it out, us out with social media and all of our other marketing pieces, and please join me in welcoming him to our team in this new capacity.
Good, thank you, Julie. Welcome, Jared. You're getting into a good arrangement here, and you'll enjoy it. I'm sure you'll do good for us as well. Have any comments you'd like to make? And most people don't, by the way, so I feel like you have to.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, we're glad to have you, Jared.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Julie.
Welcome aboard.
Gary LaRue has an introduction to make.
Mr. Chair and Board Members, it's such a pleasure to come before you today as it is always. Let me scoot something down here on my computer. And appreciate having someone come up here and be with me today. Celeste Parker. Welcome to the family of Bodata County. Celeste is coming in as an executive administrative assistant in the administrator's suite and doing a fine job. Lori had served us exceptionally well over the past two and a half, three years, three years, seems like it was only yesterday, but she's done really, really well, and Lori has been helping Celeste get her feet underneath her, and we're so pleased to have Celeste with us. Celeste comes to us from New River Computing in Blacksburg. Prior to that, she was working in Radford with Cole Morgan? Cole Morgan. Cole Morgan Corporation, I always get that one incorrect, NUXB associated with the Montgomery County also prior to that. She also has several hours in engineering and has a degree from Avery University and bachelor's in business administration, 94 credit hours in engineering previously to us, and is exceptionally well thought of within staff and within the organization. One of the things that in the interview process, actually Lori and I were, were speaking with her, and she made mention about one of these previous companies, and so I said, do you know person X? And she said, oh, yes, I know person X. And so, of course, in my rolodex of names and people and places, I just sent a text to person X to ask them what they thought of her. And they said, oh, my gosh, she is awesome. And it came back just like that, just very, very quickly, and surprised Celeste, I think, a little bit. But it was very positive and, and very sincere in, in being able to actually get information back associated with her. Celeste has hit the ground running. She is very much in tune with the speed of the process. She has worked in the previous past also with Montgomery County School System, I think, at one point in the clerk's role, deputy clerk. And so she understands working with a board, public board, understands working with the private corporations and with the complexities and the situations that we have on a daily basis. So it is a sincere welcome that we have Celeste with us today. Celeste, would you like to say anything?
No.
Thank you.
Welcome, Celeste.
Glad to have you, and you have, it sounds like the ideal background for a job with so many different tasks as your job will have. We look forward to working with you. And the final introduction is Mahesh here.
Do that next time.
Okay, okay. All right, then, we took a few items off the agenda a few minutes ago, I'm going to add one now. This was on the recommendation of Supervisor White that we asked Tracy Clark, our registrar, to give us an update on where the voting process stands in Virginia and in Bodata right now.
Hey, there you go. Thank you.
Tracy, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board. I come to you today because I didn't really have anything else to do in our office. No, just kidding. So I was asked to present at a function last week, and Ms. White was there, and she asked if I would share some information with you all. So there are several slides, but I won't go through all of them. I think you all have copies of them, if not, I can make sure that this presentation gets to you. The biggest thing is, and Chairman Clinton and I have discussed this previously, the major changes in elections, I've been in my office for six years, I mean, nine years, and it has changed completely since that time. A lot of the major changes that we've had are listed on that slide, the biggest being the no excuse absentee voting for 45 days. That has lots of good things that came out of it. The bad thing is, we have Election Day 45 days in my office, so it gets a little tricky sometimes. The other things that we have are the permanent absentee list, so people are allowed to request an absentee ballot, and they can be on that list on continuum until they actually send us a cancellation. The Juneteenth and Election Day holidays have caused a few little hiccups in the logistics aspect of elections. Juneteenth usually falls the week of the June primary, and with us using seven schools for our precincts, that usually puts a little hiccup in there because the school employees take that holiday, so we have to kind of work around those things. Of course, the other things that have changed are the political climate, social media, and folks have access to infinite news outlets. So where we are today, as far as absentee voting, we have had 5,664 voters, either in person or by mail, who have returned their ballot, and that is about a 21% turnout, which is very good. We've had, as of close of business yesterday, we've had 4,649 folks in person, and then we have received 1,015 marked ballots back. We actually had what's called a pre-processing session today, it was our second one. After the 2020 election, the law went into effect that we were allowed to pre-process ballots so that we didn't have such a massive number to try to process on Election Day. So we, we pre-process those as they come in. The biggest issue that I run into in my position is the misinformation or the disinformation that's out there and trying to dispel the rumors, trying to re-establish people's confidence in the process. And so that is a daily struggle in our office. So, you know, a lot of the misinformation mostly is on social media. You know, somebody will see a meme, or they'll, they'll answer somebody's question, and they don't really know the true answer to it. So what I would say to that is, please contact my office, we'll answer any question that you have, no question is, is a stupid question. You know, we just want to make sure that everybody understands the processes and we get that information out. As far as disinformation, after the 2020 election, the Department of Homeland Security created the Elections Infrastructure Information Sharing and Analysis Center, that's a mouthful, so we call it EII SAC. And they are constantly monitoring those types of things, you know, foreign players, cyber criminals, things like that, that may affect the elections, and so they share that information with us pretty much on a, on a daily basis. Some of the things that people ask about, the big thing that I've heard here in the last few weeks has been about list maintenance. How do we get people off of the voter rolls? How often do we take people off of the voter rolls? So most people think they've changed their address with the post office because they moved, they think automatically that everything else gets updated, that's not the case. Your voter registration stands by itself, so if you don't send us a change of address, nine times out of 10, we're not notified that someone has moved. So that causes a little bit of extra work for us, but we also get information from the state level. So the next biggest thing of people moving out of state is deaths. In our office, we actually go through the obituaries on a daily basis and identify those voters. and identify those voters who are on our rolls. We then contact the funeral home that is assisting the families, and we verify their date of birth and the last four of their social to make sure that we are canceling the correct record. And of course, we're also regularly searching for inactive people, which would be the folks who have moved out of state. We've received something back from there that we've mailed them, and so that puts them into an inactive state. The next word of the day is non-citizens. This process has actually been in the system since 2006, was when the original law was passed. Basically, what happens is if you go to the DMV and you go through the voter registration process, and you're in a hurry, and you happen to skip the citizenship question and don't mark it, then your record will come to us from the DMV stating that you're a non-citizen. I checked with the person who actually processes these things, and we've maybe had a dozen or so in the last two years, and only one of them was actually somebody who never responded to our letter. So when we get notified of that, we have to send a letter to the person letting them know that they have potentially been identified as a non-citizen, and they have 14 days from receipt of the letter to contact us and verify that. Actually, one of the ladies in our office, that happened to her. She went to the DMV. She skipped the question unintentionally. And, you know, she came into work one day, and we're like, are you a non-citizen? You got something to tell us? So that is something that has had a lot of people talking the last few weeks. The other thing is, of course, if someone is convicted of a felony or judged mentally incapacitated, we take those off. We usually don't get a lot of the mentally incapacitated, and the felonies come through the Virginia State Police. So we get that automatically. And the other thing is, anytime you are interested in information about how the state does the list maintenance, it is actually a report that they do in August every year and post it on their website. They also submit that to the General Assembly. And so you can see that for the past several years on their website. Poll books. How do we know who's voted and who hasn't when Election Day rolls around? Every morning, we update our electronic poll books for early voting. And that information includes folks who have requested an absentee ballot. If we have issued a ballot, that information gets to the electronic poll book. If someone has returned their marked ballot, that also gets to the poll book. So when you come in, if you have requested an absentee ballot, the person is going to say, you know, we show that you were issued an absentee ballot. And you do have the option of turning that in and voting in person if it's during early voting or voting on Election Day. But you do have to have that absentee ballot packet. At the end of every day, we upload the voter credit from the electronic poll book into the state database. So if something were to happen, and you were to transfer to another locality, and you had already cast your ballot, the other locality would be able to see that as well. So we try very hard to make sure that everything is up to date, whether it's on the voter roll side or the voter credit and that type of information. Absentee voting, like I said, in 2020, no excuse absentee began. It used to be that you had to have a reason to vote absentee. There's a list of 14 different things that people could choose from. So basically, any vote that you cast that is not on Election Day in your assigned precinct is considered an absentee ballot. I know a lot of people think that by mail ballots are the only thing that are considered absentee, but you will be absent from your assigned precinct on Election Day if you vote early, whether that's by mail or in person. And that is why it's called absentee voting. One of the misnomers that we hear quite often is, well, you don't count absentee ballots unless the race is really close, right? No, we count all ballots that come back to us that are eligible to be counted. Of course, absentee voting starts 45 days before every election, regardless if it's a general or a primary. And we are also required to be open the two Saturdays prior to the election. It used to be we only had to be open one Saturday before a primary, but that changed a year or so ago. So it's every two Saturdays before the election. Of course, early voting takes place in our office. Like I said, Fincastle's been buzzing the last few weeks. Seems like everybody comes at the same time. So we have absolutely nobody in the office, and then we'll have 10 or 12 people lined up out the door. But that's a good thing. Everything in early voting works pretty much like it does on Election Day. So the other thing is, most people have now been doing early voting long enough that they are confused and think that our office is their assigned precinct. And so we have folks who show up on Election Day to cast their ballot in our office, which is not, you're not eligible to do that because in-person early voting ends on the Saturday before the election. Vote by mail. The 45-day deadline for early voting includes any approved application that we have for a vote by mail ballot, which means the first day that we mail out, there is a large number, whether it's someone who has requested an application for the specific election that's going on, or if they're on the permanent absentee list. The deadline to request an absentee ballot by mail is 5 o'clock on the 11th day prior to the election, which works out to be two Fridays before the election. So this coming Friday is the deadline to request a vote by mail ballot. Ballots can be returned by mail or in person only by the voter. If you bring your marked absentee ballot into our office, you, as the voter, can turn it in, but no one else can turn in your ballot for you. And of course, we don't mass mail ballots. You have to complete an application and be approved in order to receive that ballot. And ballots must be postmarked by Election Day and received by noon on the third day after the election. And this is just a little graphic that one of the GRs in the state made up to show, you know, exactly what the path an absentee ballot takes from start to finish. Marked ballots come back in what's called the envelope B. And on the front of that envelope B is pertinent information that has to be on there by law, the full legal name, the residence address, the year of birth, and the last four of the social of the voter, as well as their signature. If any of that information is missing, what happens when we get that ballot? We open the return envelope, and we check envelope B to make sure that it has the information that is required. If it doesn't, we are required by law within three days to notify the voter that something is missing and so that it can be cured. And so we don't have a lot of that, but we do have some. And so otherwise, if that information was not on that envelope on Election Day when it went to be processed, that ballot could not be counted. So we try to make sure that all the ballots that we get are able to be processed. And as I said, we do have the mandatory, or we have pre-processing, and we have two mandatory pre-processing days that we have to have. One is the Tuesday before the election, and the other is either the Friday or Saturday before the election. And again, that's just to cut down on the number of absentee ballots that have to be processed on Election Day so that the totals can be reported in a timely manner across the state. Provisional ballots. If someone is not in their assigned precinct on Election Day, if they show that they were issued an absentee ballot, and they do not have that with them when they come to vote, they would have to vote a provisional ballot. The other thing that we now have in Virginia is same-day registration. So if you miss the application deadline, which is 21 days before the election, and that comes from back in the day when they had paper poll books. And so it took them 21 days to get everything on there and correct for Election Day. So we do have quite a few voters that come in who can register the same day. And so it takes a little extra effort to get them on the books, but they are eligible to vote. And there is a process that is run by the state. And that double checks to make sure that a voter, you know, doesn't come to Bonita, do a same-day registration, then go to Roanoke County, do a same-day registration, go to Roanoke City. So that duplicate report is run after the SDR deadline and identifies anybody who maybe has done that. And then the Electoral Board determines if the provisional ballots to be counted or rejected based on the information that we find when we do our research. Voting equipment. We've had the same voting equipment since November of 2015. So replacement is coming up soon. They usually last about 10 or 12 years. And the equipment is required by the Code of Virginia. And there's the code section there. It has to meet certain specifications. These vendors are national vendors. However, each state has their own specifications. So what a machine can do in Michigan is different than what our machines here in Virginia can do, and vice versa. Every piece of equipment has to be tested before every election. That's called L and A, or logic and accuracy testing. And what we do with that is there's a predetermined test deck with predetermined outcome. And we make sure that every line on every ballot is read correctly and that the totals come out the way they are supposed to. And also make sure that the equipment functions properly, that it queries the voter when it's supposed to, and that it just does everything that properly. And of course, once all that's done, and we do verify that everything's working correctly, we clear the votes off of that piece of equipment. We lock it and seal it. And that seal number is listed on a certification that goes to the precinct on Election Day. And that's the first thing that the chief or assistant chief does at that precinct is to verify that those seal numbers are what's on the equipment to make sure that it hasn't been tampered with. Every piece of equipment, the scanner, has a public and protected count. And this is how we tell folks that we know that their ballot was counted. The public count is like your trip odometer on your car. It can be zeroed out with every election. That's the number of ballots that have been run in that equipment for that election. And of course, the protected count is like your odometer. It never gets zeroed out and shows how many ballots have been run on that piece of equipment. And it kind of helps us know when it's getting close to needing to be replaced. Each ballot that's put in, those two numbers will increase by one. The new thing that I can tell people when they ask how they know that the equipment counted their ballot the way that it was marked. In July 2024, 24 localities in the 5th Congressional District participated in a recount, and that was for the Good Maguire race. And there were just under 63,000 ballots that were cast in that primary. And they were hand-counted during the recount. And there were only four votes that were found to be different than what was originally reported. And those were actually ones that had been hand-counted or the voter had marked too many circles on the ballot. And so it was not counted by the equipment. So, and the 24 localities, it wasn't just one vendor. It was all, there was equipment from all of the vendors across the state. So all of the equipment works the way that it's supposed to. Of course, Election Day, we have volunteers. We call them paid volunteers because they don't get paid a whole lot, and they work very long hours. But we couldn't do it without them. There's lots of duties that the chief and the assistant chief do throughout the day just to make sure that all the voters have a good experience and are able to cast their vote on Election Day. And of course, the canvas of votes and the certification of the election. The canvas must be started the day after the election by 5:00 p.m. by the Electoral Board. And what we do is we go through the statement of results that are completed by the chief and assistant chief in the precinct on Election Night, compared to the totals tapes that come off of the voting equipment. And then, of course, we have to have a provisional ballot meeting to review the provisional ballots and determine if they're to be counted or not. Once all of that is done, once the deadline for vote by mail has expired and once the SDR deadline is completed, then we can actually complete everything and do the certification. Once the certification is done, then we have abstracts that have to be signed and then submitted to the Department of Elections and the Clerk of Court. And that's, that's everything in a nutshell.
Clark, thank you very much. Comments from board members?
I just appreciate you, what you're doing to ensure the integrity of this process, for sharing it with us. I think that's abundantly important that we get the word out and that people can contact you if they have problems. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Three things kind of jump out at me, Tracy, in what you said. First of all, the magnitude and breadth of the changes that have taken place. It's almost unrecognizable from the way it was just 10 years ago.
Very much.
The other is, as Supervisor White said, the accuracy that we're enjoying. And the third is a little bit, a little bit abstract, I guess, but each change generates its own collateral type of work, or new jobs, new positions, new tasks. So there's lots of what you said, but there's more than meets the eye.
Oh, very much so. And the other thing about all of the changes is, unfortunately, when those changes come from the General Assembly, it usually doesn't come with any money. So the locality has to, you know, suck it up and pay for whatever comes down from them. And that's been a challenge the last few years. You know, we've really had to increase the number of election officials that we have and just the time and effort that it takes and supplies and things like that. One of the biggest things is the reporting, the central absentee by precinct. It used to be that, for example, for a presidential election, most of the precincts would have the same exact ballot, except for the towns. And so we could just order X number of ballots. And if Fincastle Precinct was running low, we could grab some from Troutville or whatever. We can no longer do that because each individual precinct has its own unique ballot. So we have to try to anticipate what that outcome is, what the turnout's going to be to make sure that we have enough ballots. Sometimes it's, you know, a close call, and sometimes we have lots of ballots left over that don't get used. So.
Tough job, and you do a great, you do a great job at it. The good news is, I'm sure you're aware of this, but all the increased tasks and personnel, like you say, the localities have been asked to shoulder most of that cost increase. We have on our legislative agenda, as we did last year, a plea that the registration funding be looked at more closely because your jobs have changed so much.
Yeah, it has.
See where it goes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tracy, how is the 21% this year compared to the last presidential this close to the election?
Well, you can't get information for a specific date in the 2020 election now at this point. Well, you can't get information for a specific date in the 2020 election now at this point. We had a total of 9,179 voters who voted early for that election. So we're about at 5,000 and we've still got two weeks left, which are always the busiest. So we're going to be pushing pretty close to what we had in 2020. We'll probably fall beneath it, but I look for it to be, you know, pretty close. Because the closer the election gets, the busier that we have become.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
We have had waiting patiently a number of personnel from firing EMS. Chief Ferguson, you want to pick up this item?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. With me today, I have several folks from the department that participated in two deployments that you were apprised of related to the remnants of Hurricane Helene in the far southwest Virginia area, as well as in Asheville, North Carolina itself. Just a quick introduction of who we have, and then I'm going to turn it over to emergency manager Murray. We have Billy Crimes, who's also a volunteer at Troutville, but is representative of VDEM as part of this adventure. He actually initiated the conversations that took place that led to a couple of our staff going to Asheville to the heart of the disaster. Beside him, Adam Murray, who is Daniel's brother and also does a lot of intricate work with search and rescue and drones and things like that. That's part of our team. Next to him is firefighter paramedic Hunter Smith. He was the paramedic on the attachment with the team that went to Asheville. Next to him, Captain Brandon Gola. He was our officer on the engine crew that went to Damascus. Next to him is firefighter EMT Adam Flora, who also was part of the engine crew that went to Damascus. And of course, emergency manager Daniel Murray. Elliot Emmerich, one of our firefighter paramedics that was on the deployment to Damascus, could not be with us today, but I also wanted to recognize him. So I'll let Daniel give you a tour of what they went through.
Good afternoon. Thank you for letting us have a few minutes to show you what we saw while we were down there. Hurricane Helene landfall is a category four. Currently, there's reported over 219 deaths, which put it at the fifth deadliest hurricane in U.S. history at this point. Estimates of infrastructure and property costs are looking to be over $200 billion, which is the most costly hurricane that's hit the U.S. at this point. Parts of North Carolina and Tennessee experienced over 30 inches of rainfall, which is what we experienced while we were down in Asheville. And by the end of the storm, all 28 FEMA task forces, which are the rescue component of FEMA, had been deployed to that greater area that the hurricane had hit. So we went on three different deployments that we're going to talk a little bit about this afternoon. The first one was down to southwest Virginia. Obviously, when the storm hit us, we were, we had our emergency operations center open. We were monitoring things that happened here in the county. But luckily, we were spared from the bulk of it. We had a lot of downed trees and some downed wires and things, but we didn't experience the flooding that a lot of other places did. So one of the first places that we deployed on was to Grayson County, Virginia. We went as part of an incident management team that we're actively members of. We went with Bedford County, Roanoke City, and city of Martinsville. And we met up with folks from northern Virginia region, Hampton Roads and central Virginia to go help all the localities down in southwest Virginia. Grayson County, Washington County, and Smith County were some of the hardest hits down there with the town of Damascus being kind of in the epicenter of that. So we went down to help those folks out. We provided support to the emergency operations center and helped with damage assessments, evaluating lifelines, establishing food and water distribution centers, evaluating sheltering needs and submitting those needs back to VDEM so that they could get filled, whether on a state or a federal level. This kind of goes to show you that most of what we saw throughout all of our deployments is that a lot of the maps in all of southwest Virginia and North Carolina are now wrong. The topography is completely changed from where the river used to be to where the river is flowing now. And that'll become evident a little bit later. The next deployment that we went on was for our engine crew down to Damascus, Virginia. As I said, that was one of the hardest hit areas in southwest Virginia. And this is our four-engine crew that went with us. They went down under a statewide mutual aid request and provided staffing for 24 hours. While they were down there, they helped provide fire suppression needs as well as some community engagement and helping those businesses and individuals kind of get the mud out of their businesses and try to start rebuilding what they were doing. It also gave the firefighters time where they normally respond locally to their incidents. They were dealing with their own things at home. So our folks were there to kind of help out and respond to those calls so that they could go home and deal with their own disasters. The last deployment we went on was a week-long deployment down to western North Carolina. We went as part of a human remains detection canine strike team. As Chief Ferguson said, Billy led our efforts and going down there. And our team helped provide logistical support, advanced life support for our team that was down there. We also provided some orthostatic mapping and some technical SAR assistance. One thing that you'll see in the photo there is our HVAC unit that we have here in the county for our sheltering. We've gotten a lot of equipment over the past couple of years on grant funding that we've kind of helped supplement those grants when we've gotten them. And this just goes to show how some of that grant funding has been put to work in some of the hardest hit areas. We went down as part of a 14-person team with folks from all over the Commonwealth. There are 20 different volunteer teams that make up the search and rescue program that VDEM manages. So we partner with VDEM, with Virginia State Parks, Virginia State Police. And we went down as a cohesive unit with four canines to help out. We did this under an emergency management assistance compact. And basically, this is a bidding process that emergency managers can use to set a federal cost center that all of our resources get reimbursed as they deploy out to these so that we can order in specialty resources or that we can be reimbursed when we put our specialty resources out there. The first community we went to in North Carolina was Fairview, North Carolina. As you can see from the photos, it was a lot of agriculture that was in that community. It was kind of spread out. It looked a lot like Bodatot around the river basin. And the rivers just flowed to a rate that it just completely tore through that community, unfortunately. This gives you just a little bit of a sight of the devastation that we kind of saw that was down there. We were attacked, we were put with one of the FEMA task forces to kind of search through debris piles and to use the dogs to detect anything that may have been left behind by the task forces as they clean through the debris piles. We also were able to provide the locality with some real-time mapping with our drones, our UAVs. And what this did was they could basically get a Google Earth image of what the disaster zone looked like in real time so they could get a real handle on what exactly they were dealing with. So we were able to do that for them. Our last day was spent in Bat Cave, North Carolina, which had gotten a lot of press. And to give you kind of just a sight of what we saw, this is what it looked in June of last year. And this is what it looks like now. So completely and absolutely devastated in that area. This gives you kind of an overview of the fact that I said the topography has completely changed. Where the river runs now is where the roadbed used to be. So this is going from Bat Cave down towards Chimney Rock, North Carolina. So a lot of devastation that we saw throughout that entire area. This area received about 30 inches of rain. One of the things that we had to do while we were down there is there were multiple inaccessible areas. So we partnered up with the locality that was down there, Henderson County Technical Rescue Team. This picture has gone viral. And so this is one of our canines that was on our team that was down there. We had to put canines back and forth across the river to check debris piles and things. So that was one of our tasks that we were doing. So what did we see and how does that help us here in Bodatot? There's four big things that we kind of saw while we were down there that ties into active projects that we have going on. The first one is the safety initiative that we've been working on with multiple internal stakeholders here in the county. We have a committee forum that is looking at all the things within our Bodatot County buildings and how can we make it safer and a safer workplace for our employees? So we're actively doing that and we've been rolling some training out that goes along with that. Also with that is back when Katrina hit, they figured out that a lot of people didn't talk the same language. So they came up with a standard system called the National Incident Management System that we adopted back in 2005. One of the initiatives that we've been working on is training all county employees in that system so that when we have to use all these employees in a disaster zone, then everybody is speaking the same language. An example of this is back in COVID, we used our librarians to be call center takers when people got registered for the vaccine. So this has happened before and that's what we saw a lot down in Asheville is that everybody had a hand in this disaster. We've also recently switched our mass notification system so that we could better notify both our employees, our internal and external stakeholders and citizens so that when we do have an emergency, we can let them know the best way to get to help. And the last thing is, coming up in April, you'll see me up here again, is time to renew our emergency operations plan. And as part of that, we're going to take lessons that we learned in these disasters to implement a system called Community Lifelines. This is something FEMA uses instead of an emergency support function model. We're going to be using this model to kind of help us more quickly determine what we need to get back online to get our citizens back to a normal way of life. So that's what we saw. I appreciate y'all's time and letting us show you what we saw.
Thank you, Daniel.
Yes, thank you very much.
Chief, did you have anything you want to say?
I really just thank you. This is really the first opportunity that we've had as a department to be at a stature where we could allow some folks who were not on duty, that did not impact the local emergency response, to be able to go. That's obviously part of what you saw is, you know, folks raising their hand, especially on the EMAC side, since all that is reimbursable. Not only is it reimbursable for the folks that are gone, but if we're having to backfill their seat on the schedule, that is all part of the reimbursement process. We try to stay engaged in these things because it's not that it happened here, but the potential for it to happen here, whether it's a mass flooding type of event or some other type of natural disaster, we're just as susceptible as any other of these communities. So the experiences that they gain and the information that they bring back adds immense value to our team and the preparedness arena that Daniel was speaking to. So just thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you.
Good job.
Outstanding work, Jason. Thank you.
Let's move on to number four, Bank of Bodatot's 125th year anniversary.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Board and everyone. I'm going to ask some of our Bank of Bodatot friends up here. I see Michelle Austin and Mary Ann Miller and some of their other colleagues. And we're going to really quickly read this resolution to recognize them. So Bodatot County Board of Supervisors Resolution, recognizing the Bank of Bodatot's 125th anniversary. Oh, I totally need to tilt that camera up on you guys. Nicole, can you come down and tilt that camera up on them? So that way I'm not chopping their heads off. Whereas for 125 years, Bank of Bodatot has provided top-notch customer and community services to improve the quality of life for the residents of its service area. And whereas originally named Bank of Buchanan, the bank was chartered in 1899 by the General Assembly and located on Main Street in downtown Buchanan. The bank changed its name to Bank of Bodatot in 1995. And whereas today, Bank of Bodatot is a community bank with 800 million in assets, it has 133 employees with 13 locations, covering 2,500 square miles in the counties of Bodatot, Franklin, Roanoke, and Rockbridge, and the city of Salem. The bank is currently expanding and building an office in the town of Rocky Mount, along with a location in Goodwill's Melrose Plaza in the city of Roanoke. And whereas Bank of Bodatot prioritizes focusing on the communities it serves and seeks to find ways to further the overall economic development of the region. And whereas, as a community partner, Bank of Bodatot makes charitable contributions, which we see all the time in our community, to support education, culture, and the arts, social service, and community action agencies, community and economic development, and other programs that serve the needs of the area residents. And whereas Bank of Bodatot encourages its employees to be active in the community through mentoring, volunteering, donating, and identifying opportunities for civic service. And employees give back more than 850 hours annually through volunteerism. And whereas Bank of Bodatot offers $3,000 in annual scholarships for eligible students and offers $500 grants for graduating high school seniors of bank employees. The bank annually participates in the Virginia Bankers Association Bank Day, which allows high school seniors to spend the day with bankers to learn about banking, financial services, and the vital role banks play in their communities. And whereas, over its extensive history, Bank of Bodatot has been led by seven bank presidents who have worked tirelessly to secure the prosperity and well-being of the region it serves. Now, therefore, be it resolved, we are asking you guys to proclaim this 22nd day of October 2024, commending Bank of Bodatot on 125 years of exemplary service to the community and to Bodatot County.
Thank you.
Quickly express my gratitude for the recognition today, the commemoration of our 125th year. Ned and I and Mary Ann after us, we've been here a long time and I think that's part of our success. 22% of our employees have been at the bank 20 years or longer. And so having that longevity and having ties right here in the community is part of that success. We appreciate all the support that we get from Bodatot County residents and just very appreciative that you all took time to do this today. And finally, I just want to say thank you for your public servant hood. I know it's not an easy job, so thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a great, great hometown story. And it's been going for a long time and an unmistakable upward trajectory, which is really something to be proud of. So do you all want to introduce yourselves, board members, aren't you?
I'm Ned Austin, Chief Executive Vice President.
Ned.
Joyce Kessinger from the Board of Directors.
Joyce is the Chair of the Board of Directors.
And I'm Mary Ann Miller, Business Development and Marketing Strategy.
Well, we appreciate your being here. And most of all, we appreciate what you've done for Bodatot County and your own business. Numbers like 850 volunteer hours and that's the sign of a successful company. So I don't think there'll be any hesitation to endorse the resolution. But I will move that the Bodatot County Board of Supervisors approve the resolution that Ms. Bradbury just read.
I will gladly second that.
Is there any discussion other than hooray? Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, of course, it carries. Thanks again for all your leadership.
Thank you all so much. Congratulations.
Figure it out now.
So that brings us up to number five, Recognition of VACO Achievement Award for a great Bodatot program. Thanks for you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, board members. I'm Dean Lynch. I'm the Executive Director of the Virginia Association of Counties. And it's my distinct privilege to be in Bodatot County this afternoon to present a VACO Achievement Award. For the benefit of your constituents who may not be familiar with the Virginia Association of Counties, let me say that VACO has existed since 1934 to serve and support the efforts of you all as county officials. We support counties in many ways. One is through advocacy at the state legislature and at the federal level. We also provide education and training opportunities for board members. And we serve counties through communication efforts, our communication efforts. In 2003, we established our Achievement Award Program to recognize counties that have adopted innovative approaches to providing public services. And today, I'm proud to present Bodatot County with its Achievement Award. A little, little bit about the Achievement Award Program at VACO. This is our 22nd Achievement Award, Annual Achievement Award Program. This year, we received over 145 entries. And Bodatot, being one of the great programs, received one of these awards. This is truly a competitive a competitive program. We have a select group of judges that looks, that read every entry, and they are looking at innovative, they look at innovative solutions to problems. They also look to award counties that provide intergovernmental cooperation programs, and they also look to see whether this program provides a model that other counties can emulate. And finally, is this program an innovative approach to solve a problem? This year, in awarding Bodatot County with this Achievement Award, this is the, just to let you know, this is the ninth Achievement Award received by Bodatot County. Bodatot County won an Achievement Award, VACO Achievement Award in 2003, 2004, 2010, 2015, 2019, two awards in 2020, and in 2022. So congratulations to Bodatot County. And the program that won the award this year is setting the record straight. And I'm going to ask Mr. LaRue to come up and talk a little bit more about the program.
Thank you, Dean. Certainly is a pleasure to be here with you, and we've worked together for 20 years. I don't know.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. Long time, long time that we've worked together in various capacities throughout the Commonwealth. So we certainly do appreciate Dean coming and representing VACO in this program. So what the program was in Bodatot that ended up winning this award was BOCO Facts for You. And what we were trying to do was to bring good, solid information against some rumors that had been floated throughout the community on an ongoing basis. And that happens in every community is that things get promoted that are not necessarily the factually based. And so what we wanted to do was to take those rumors and then turn those into factually based information. So that's what we tried to do, and that's what we have done within the program and tried to bring the record straight, as you said, Dean, and end up allowing local folks to know what the facts are behind some of the things that have taken place in the past. So it's always a pleasure to be in front of the board, but also it's rare, but even though Bodatot has won so many, the Achievement Award is something that is not glanced over. That is something that is very much appreciated from the locality, from the citizens, and very well respected. The Virginia Association of Counties is just a top-notch organization. And so one of the things that I ended up doing back whenever we started this program was I called up Dean and I said, Dean, how many localities are dealing with this program? I think Dean said 100%.
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five, ninety-five counties. So are dealing with the same problem. And I said, so how many communities are trying to deal with this in some progressive manner? And I'm sure 95 were trying to deal with it in some progressive manner, but none in the way that we approached it, I don't think. And so I don't know that how many localities have actually emulated something like this, but I think that it did help us in the process. And so very thankful for the award and thank you for the encouragement along the way also, Dean, and this and then many other things that you've done throughout the time of being with VACO.
Good to be here. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Can we get a picture?
And Mr. Chairman, I hope to see you in a couple of weeks at the VACO Annual Conference coming up. Thank you.
Very nice. And to the county employees and staff members, congratulations for having such an innovative program and carrying it out as well as you did. Many things happen to make Bodatot County proud. Suitable for free. We can move on now to number six. Number six, Citizen Comment Period is specific to the agenda. And what this means is this is wide open, whatever you'd like, or no, excuse me, it's not wide open, specific to the agenda at the conclusion of the meeting, toward the conclusion. We'll have another comment period for any open item that people would like to discuss. So for this one, specific to the agenda. I think both are marked. Yeah. They're both on items that we're not, that we haven't talked about yet, but nonetheless, Lee Markell, this is on the TND ordinance and text.
Thank you for letting me speak. So this is about the TND ordinance text. So basically, the changes that they're wanting are the reducing of lot sizes nearly by half for duplexes to 4,400 square feet, reducing setbacks to six feet instead of 25, reducing parking requirements from two lanes to one. So what we're looking at is half the previous capacity to park for almost double the previous resident capacity, and everyone perched practically on the road. It sounds like that needs a public hearing from the planning commission, so I'm supporting that. Thank you.
Ms. Markell, you want to take your next one?
Sure.
Legislative priorities?
Sure. So this one is the legislative priorities that you have in the agenda packet. Item number seven in your legislative priorities, can you reset that clock, please, and thank you. Thanks. Item number seven is unfunded mandates from the state. That seems like a really good one in there. I appreciate that. It's really annoying to have the state tell us what to do and then not give us the money to do it. Aside from that, though, there are multiple stinkers in that document. Number one, the education funding. There's still a glaring lack of accountability from the school board on expenditures, especially as relates to the number of students served versus the Bodatot population. Additionally, the term maintenance seems to be missing from the phrase indicating that school construction, renovation, and debt service all need funded. And then the maintenance then needs performed well, timely, and completely accounted for. Number four, economic development. The EDA has far too much taxpayer-generated revenue in its coffers, which rightly ought to be in the treasurer's transparent control. And it seems the county wants to invite more state-level involvement and strings into county business, such as the Virginia Department of Housing, which will include strings and hoops that result in regulations and restrictions here in Bodatot. Number eight, transportation funding. The document states, continuing reliance on private use of public highways as the dominant transportation solution is increasingly unsustainable in terms of infrastructure development and maintenance and public funding. BOCO advocates solutions designed to reduce vehicular traffic on public roadways, which sounds to me like it says, Bodatot wants the public roads funded by the taxpayers, but please would you taxpayers get off the roads in your pesky personally-owned vehicles? Inevitably, the public mass transit option gets developed to the detriment of individual private taxpaying road users. So I'm not in support of any mass transit development that impinges on individual private use of taxpayer-funded roads. The other in the document states, BOCO supports maintaining local and expanding authority to plan and regulate land use. BOCO opposes any legislation that reduces the authority of government for planning, regulating short-term rentals. BOCO opposes legislation that limits or restricts local authority to regulate home-based businesses regardless of whether services or goods are purchased through an online hosting platform. This is the most control-hungry authoritarian government-bloating language I've seen baldly stated in a local government document. What Bodatot needs is more liberty, not more control by petty tyrants living next door. These positions are unacceptable. In the specific cases of the politicians who support these authoritarian policies, the public will hear those names and policies again during campaign season. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's do this. Number 10, it was next on the agenda, beat-up monthly update. And following that, it might be a good time to take a five-minute break. So be that.
Good afternoon, Board. Thank you. And I'll try to keep it brief to get you back on schedule a little bit here. So we are currently working to complete our 2024 resurfacing contract. Should be done hopefully in the next couple of weeks with all the resurfacing of the roads. We had a TNE work order this month, which was for the layman town in Norwood Drive, request for speed limit reduction, and that is still with traffic engineering. Expect to hear that back before the next meeting that we have next month. We have several, of course, land development projects that are in various stages. They've been on the list here for, you know, a few months here. So had 14 permits issued during the month for various things. And we had a little bit of an update on the 220 project here. The best news I can tell you is that as before Thanksgiving, they are expecting to have the permanent lane closure out, and any work will be done on daily lane closures, which means they'll come out during peak hours. They won't be allowed to work during those peak hours. So hopefully that'll help with some of the traffic congestion. We completed Blue Ridge Drive and Oak Drive, that project there that we have been working on for the last few weeks. And we've also finished the work on Spruce Circle where we had the sinkhole kind of thing there. And one other one that's not on the list is Stamen Road, which was cased during the storm. We had some damage there, and we've got an emergency project in the works for that. So that should be starting very shortly. Other than that, we've just been doing our routine work with our area headquarters, mowing, trying to get some things cleaned up and prepping for the winter snow that we hope we don't get. So any questions?
Thanks very much. Let's start with Blue Ridge. Say say for beat-up.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Big asshole. Met with a couple ladies last week or so, down on Route 694, Sinking Creek.
Yes, sir.
And pretty much all their gravel's gone. Where it goes to gravel and then state maintenance ends there at the creek.
Yes.
And pretty good velocity in that ditch. It's really eroding back into the actual driving area there. So they're getting a little further over all the time.
I got you. Okay, we'll take a look at that. Thank you.
And while you're at it, can you see if that is a candidate maybe for rural rusting? I think it'd be kind of on the edge there. It's not a, I don't think we got the vehicles there.
Okay, yes, certainly will. Yep. We'll look into that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Update.
I was going to ask you.
I knew I was coming. I had it written down.
We still do not have a contractor that's willing to do that. So the best hope we've got right now is that we can advertise it this winter with a caveat that they have to start as soon as the weather meets the required temperature. So hopefully we can squeeze that in prior to their regular paving schedules and things that they do. But right now, everybody's, I guess, behind and they're at their capacity to do the work. We've even approached our contractors that do the work and just said, look, if we can get a waiver to just get you to do the work, and they said, we just don't have the capacity to do it before winter. So I'm really sorry to hear that. I know you are. I am too. I know. I'm very sorry about that, but it doesn't look good right now. So.
Very good. Nothing from Amsterdam. So thanks for your reports.
Thank you very much.
So I'm going to risk taking a break. I think it's a good time to do it, but please be scrupulous about being back, let's say, 3:30. So we are in recess for approximately five minutes.
So we are in recess for approximately five minutes. Consent agenda. So on the uh originally published agenda, we have three items and we have proposed and proved the idea of adding one, two, three more. So let's go with the consent agenda. Uh, well, just just make sure we're clear on this. On the published, uh, on the published agenda, we have item A, minutes of the last meeting, which is uh conventional. Item B, Joint Party Supervisors Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for November twenty sixth. Item C has to do with refund of taxes for a particular individual. Then we're adding on agenda item on our agenda, we're adding Blue Ridge Parkway and Blue Ridge Rising Resolutions. Uh, propose to put that in the consent agenda and a resolution to support Corrigan Clinic's kidney transplant program together with the with the appointments. So if that makes sense to everybody, I'll entertain a motion relative to the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
That moves and second is attorney discussion. Be comfortable with the consent agenda.
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you. And Ms. Davis, we're up with the uh finance and accounting items, number eight. Approval of transfers and additional appropriations. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Uh, for the month of October, there is one transfer request. It's a recurring quarterly transfer to move budgeted funds from various departments to the Sheriff's Department for vehicle repairs at the county garage. Additionally, there are two pass-through appropriations. Uh, the first is for discrete funds related to medical reimbursements. And the second is for miscellaneous reimbursements and fees, both for the sheriff's office. It is requested by staff that these transfers and appropriations be approved by the board. Are there any questions I can answer at this time?
Any questions?
No.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That is.
I'll just stay here for the next item if that's okay.
Sorry.
I'll just wait here for the next item if that's okay. Accounts payable.
I couldn't hear you.
The the next item on the agenda.
Oh, you 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 don't have it in front of you?
I do. I was just.
Okay, okay.
Um, so for October, uh, the total amount of expenditures being requested for approval for all funds is eight hundred and seven thousand, six fifty two ninety. Uh, it should be noted that due to the timing of holidays and schedules this month, there's no regular AP run to be approved that will actually take place on the twenty fourth and then be ratified by the board on the November board meeting. Um, notable disbursements for the month included um, oh, fifty one thousand dollars uh that related to the Reed Mountain Fire Department uh dispatch expansion and a hundred thousand paid to the local health department for the second quarter FY twenty five payment as per the agreement. So are there any questions or comments related to accounts payable?
Questions on the accounts payable? Is there a motion?
So move.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Uh, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Ms. Davis, in one second, I just want to um acknowledge what a difficult month this has been for you and for all of us, but especially for you. And I appreciate your diligence and carrying on the good work that Mr. Zerilla did and that I know you're doing right now. So I thank you and I um appreciate what you've been through.
Thank you.
Next item, uh, if we delete the ones that we postponed or rescheduled is number fourteen Harvest at Blue Ridge Resolution, Mr. McFadden.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen in the audience. Uh, earlier this year, the Board of Supervisors approved a rezoning for a traditional neighborhood development, TND development on the old Murray cider property. Uh, this development to be called The Harvest at Blue Ridge is designed for a mix of starter homes and larger homes in a planned community. Uh, recently Dale Wilkinson of the Wilkinson Group, uh representative of The Harvest at Blue Ridge Development, has requested that the Board of Supervisors consider designating the property in order for it to qualify for low interest financing from Virginia Housing, formerly the Virginia Housing Development Authority. The attached resolution in your packet would make the necessary legislative findings in order to qualify the property for the financing. And this resolution that is in your packet is the same adopted by the Board of Supervisors in twenty eighteen for the reserve at Daleville. Happy to take any questions, or if you would like for me to read the resolution, I can certainly do so.
I I would actually, you read the resolution.
Okay. A resolution designating certain property to be eligible for Virginia housing financing pursuant to section thirty six point by five point three thirty, excuse me, uh, subparagraph two B of the Code of Virginia of nineteen fifty as amended. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of the County of Bodatot, Virginia desires to make the determination required by section thirty six dash fifty five point thirty, subparagraph two B of the Code of Virginia of nineteen fifty as amended in order for the Virginia housing to finance the economically mixed project known as the project at The Harvest at Blue Ridge and proposed to be located in the Blue Ridge District in Bodatot County, Virginia. And whereas the proposed project is more particularly described on exhibit A attached here too, which I believe would be the zoning permit. And whereas the Board of Supervisors of the County of Bodatot believes that the economically mixed communities are beneficial to the county and to the citizens of Bodatot, now therefore be it hereby determined and resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Bodatot County, Virginia as follows. One, the ability to provide residential housing and supporting facilities that serve persons or or families of LMI will be enhanced if a portion of the units in the project are occupied or held available for occupancy by persons and families who are not of LMI. And number two, private enterprise and investment are not reasonably expected without assistance to produce the construction or rehabilitation of decent, safe and sanitary housing and supporting facilities that will meet the needs of LMI persons or and families in the surrounding area of the project and will induce other persons and families to live within such area and thereby create a desirable economic mix of residents in such area. Number three, this resolution shall be in effect from and after the date of its adoption. Proposed to be adopted this twenty second day of October twenty two thousand twenty four by the Board of Supervisors.
And we, thank you, Ken. We have uh on our agenda a table that indicates there should be a voice vote, I think. Uh, though I else they would do this, but um, do you know um because of the table, does that have to be a voice vote?
It, Mr. Clinton, it does not need to be a voice vote. I just make a habit of putting that box at the end of resolutions that I draft because you always have to have an exact statement of how everybody voted in order for it to be a lawful resolution. And I just like to do that even it's always, it always winds up being recorded in the minutes, but I do that frankly, it's just a belt and suspenders so that everybody remembers what we need to do and we don't foul anything up. But you can do a voice vote as long as you can hear what everybody votes.
Yeah, I think I'll do a voice vote. This is, this is a significant and I think um beneficial ordinance for us promoting economic uh diversity. And coming from a developer who is is apparently on the verge of a an exciting development. So I will move for approval.
I'll second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Uh, well, I'm sorry, any discussion? If you're in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so there'll be a check mark for the S box for me, Ms. White, Mr. Nicely and Mr. Michael. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Brings us up to number sixteen. Memo agreement on the Buchanan Elementary Park pedestrian trail. Who's here to speak to that? Mr. Mormon?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm pleased to uh bring this matter before you today uh on behalf of the county, the town of Buchanan, and also uh the Bodatot County Public Schools. Um, all three parties have been working collaboratively over recent months uh to bring this proposal before you. Um, uh, I would like to share that uh Ms. Rose Jeter from the Buchanan Town Council is here with us. Uh, she's chairman of the Town's Recreation Committee and she's available to answer any questions that she may have in considering this today. Um, my understanding is that this project grew out of a um uh study that the town uh commissioned for recreation opportunities uh within and around the town and that uh there was uh interest expressed in in having additional trail amenities in the area. And the um property of Buchanan Elementary School and that the county owns adjacent to that Buchanan Park was identified as a desirable location for such a trail. So what you have before you is an agreement. That would be a three-party agreement between the town, the county and Bodatot County Public Schools for the construction and maintenance of a pedestrian trail on both school and county property. Um, and uh it would be conditioned upon uh the town receiving grant fundings to support the construction and maintenance of the trail. Uh, the work would be performed uh by by town and or volunteers, uh, but it would all be coordinated through the town is my understanding. Um, the portion of the trail that would be on school property would be um under the authority of the school division. So the school division could set rules for when that trail would be usable by the public and when it would not. And the schools have indicated that they would restrict public use to um hours when students were not in the school, so it'd be during non-school hours. And the county likewise would be able to regulate uh the use of the trail on county property. Um, there would be no cost uh to the county uh or to the school division is my understanding for the development or maintenance of the trail. Um, and at any time, any of the parties could terminate the agreement if if they wished um and felt the need to do so. Uh, so I think that's generally the terms of the agreement in a nutshell. Uh, Mr. Lockaby was very helpful in uh putting this agreement together for us. It's been reviewed by all the parties. I believe everyone is in in agreement. And we would simply ask that um following any questions you have, if you see fit, that you would authorize the agreement uh and adopt it in concept and principle and authorize staff to sign it upon review and approval of the county attorney.
Thank you, David. Questions for board members?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve.
Ms. White has moved for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
I would just want to uh again acknowledge Councilwoman Jeter uh who's here today from Buchanan Town Council. She's worked very, very hard on this. Um, you can imagine um the victory that that we will feel if this passes that we have three municipalities or government agencies with their respective three attorneys that have agreed on something. And um we all feel this is really, really beneficial to our community. This uh came out of the uh Recreation Economy Grant that the town has been working on now for eighteen months, I think. And uh we feel like this is the start of of some better things to come, but this will benefit all residents in in the community and we're thrilled to to have been a part of this. So um I thank you for considering it.
Great program for lots of ways for the the town itself becoming more and more progressive uh for health and all that sort of thing. And it's coming at a good time. There's a lot of exciting things happening with Buchanan, so this helps fill that out. It's been moved and seconded that we approve this this agreement. Any, I already asked, but is there any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It passes. Thank you, David. I I skipped um an item, a public hearing, uh, but we can go back to that. Um, let's go on to the museum. This item number seventeen, the Bodatot Museum AE Scope of Work. This is Mr. Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, I'm here on behalf of the Museum Committee, uh essentially to request that you appropriate and authorize the use of additional funds uh that the county has received from the state. And there's a nice write-up in your board packet uh under county administrator's report report and recommendation that gives you those numbers. But I thought I would give you a little briefing uh today before uh you all take that action, simply because this has been sort of a long, drawn-out uh process and a number of things have taken place and it's, if you haven't had a full briefing on it, I'd like to take about three or four minutes and do that. Uh, just a reminder, uh, this is a project being uh overseen essentially by uh a volunteer task force uh from members of the community. Uh, and as a reminder, those are John Alderson, Terry Austin, uh, Mr. Clinton, who took uh Dr. Bailey's place uh on the committee uh when uh Dr. Bailey uh didn't run again for the board, uh Matt Miller, Ann Layman, Lindsey Alley, uh Julie Langen, who is actually uh from the state um historical um Division of Historic Resources, I believe. Uh, David Mormon, who I guess is not technically a member of the committee but has been providing staff support to the committee. Uh, prior to that, it was John Lanford. Uh, Mary Beth Smith, uh, myself and uh Bo Trumbo was um involved early on. Um, Bo is less active in the county today maybe than he was, but we've retained him as a potential consultant because of his strong historical knowledge. Uh, as a reminder, uh AE Comm um has had the architectural design and feasibility work on this. We started out with the intention of putting it in the town of Fincastle. Uh, it, the funding came about essentially because you all are mandated to build a new courthouse uh and that resulted or is resulting in the closing of the old museum relocation and maybe converting that old museum to essentially to an artifact. Uh, so Mr. Austin was able to get state allocation of funds relative to building a new museum since the county was bearing the full burden of building a courthouse, uh which to a large extent is a state mandate. Uh, much of what occurs in that building is a result of state law. So uh we intended to build it in Fincastle. Uh, that has not worked out for a variety of feasibility reasons, particularly relative to lack of space uh around Courthouse Square. So the project, the decision was to move the project by the committee to Greenfield on that 27-acre historical property. Some preliminary work has been done there in terms of siting, and there is a map in your packet that shows preliminary location. That's subject to the work in the next phase, if you all approve that appropriation of funds. Mr. Clinton and I actually went before the Greenfield Advisory Council back in April or May, I guess it was, to make sure that group, which has kind of been the county's eyes and ears in the oversight of that historical property, 27-acre property, make sure they felt it was fit with the historical nature of the property and the intended uses. And as I recall, we got a unanimous vote of endorsement for that. So the plan at this stage would be, as indicated in your board packet, to engage AE Comm to go in and do a formal site plan, grading plan, new entrance, and then a 35% architectural design. And then pause the project at that point, which would allow several things to happen. One, you all to see a final proposed location for the museum site. Make sure that, in fact, fitted, fit with what the board wants to see occur in there. And then secondarily, to give us more realistic and up-to-date cost estimates before proceeding with any actual construction plans or bidding and construction of the facility. Frankly, we're expecting it to need additional funding. Part of the work done in the first phase of this by AE Comm was feasibility analysis and an economic study. And one of the conclusions of that was that we would need roughly 10,000 square foot building to accomplish what you would want to accomplish for a museum, for a community of this size and with its historical significance. That would allow space for administration, storage, and then still hopefully have 7,000 to 8,000 square feet of exhibit space in the facility. We don't have, we will get architectural design subsequent. And so we'll have more detail about that. But as a result of that analysis, the determination that we would need 10,000 square feet to have a truly functioning museum, we expect to need additional funding. I expect Mr. Austin to approach the General Assembly about that. We hope to get architectural renderings and good cost information out of this next phase of the study to support his actions or efforts in that regard. Anything else I need to tell you? Two items relative to moving from Finn Castle to Greenfield. One, it'll be larger space, larger parking, closer to the population centers, and we think more supportive of the economic long-term viability of the museum. I've never seen a museum that paid for itself. It's gonna, there'll be some revenue from museum visitation fees and gift shop, so on, but all of these require some sort of subsidization. We expect over the next couple of years to work out those issues relative to governance and not-for-profit status and how operational support is brought about. So lots of unanswered questions today. This next phase at least gets us additional information relative to final cost. And we'll be back to you again asking for a formal approval of a location and hopefully acceptance of additional funds. I'll pause for questions and then ask you if you would approve it and let the committee proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Williamson. Questions? You, and it's mentioned in here, and you mentioned just now fundraising. Has there been any, and I think I read some of the documents are directed towards would be used for fundraising to make, to give visuals.
There is a proposal in this from AE Comm for a certain amount of expenditure to support fundraising efforts. That is not a part of the request to you today. We have not committed to running a capital campaign for the museum. Going to see first what Mr. Austin can accomplish with the General Assembly and the theory on why the state should be funding this project. We may well be in a capital raising mode at some point, but we have not committed to that, and there is not funding or not a request for funding today to utilize AE Comm for that process. In fact, if we were to do that, I'm not sure that's whom I think we should use, but that's another story.
Okay. Anything else from anyone? Well, it's a good project. It's a demanding project, but it'll be a boost to Bonnetot for sure and a boost to Greenfield and a good thing for our communities.
Thank you.
And you need a motion, I think.
I'll move to approve this appropriation.
And I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Now, if we can recover the item that I missed earlier on, the public hearing.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we'd ask that the board conduct a public hearing on a proposed 100-square-foot easement from the county to the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality. DQ has asked for the county's cooperation in placing a long-term drought monitoring well on county property here within Greenfield. The location would be within the recreation park area next to the sports complex. I'm sorry, we don't have a diagram for you here. It would be on the west side of the sports complex, between that and the Frisbee Golf Course parking area. It would be along a service road access, so it wouldn't interfere with any current activities. It would be easily accessible, and it would be 100-square-foot easement area. So really no impact on any county operations, but it would be very helpful to the department. Staff would recommend your support following a sheet of public comment.
Makes perfect sense to me. So I will move for approval. No, wait a minute. We have to do the public hearing. Any discussion from board members? Any discussion or questions from the public?
A public hearing.
I'm sorry, I should have stayed down here. I'm going to field that question to best my ability, and if someone else knows better, they can correct me, because this isn't my wheelhouse. My understanding is that this is a well for them to monitor groundwater levels and during drought periods. That's the best answer I can give. I don't know if anyone, yeah, right. Just to water, just to monitor the ground table, is my understanding.
Okay, before you leave. Will this be fenced in?
I do not believe so. I don't know that for sure, but from what I've understood, there has not been any discussion fencing in. The well, yeah, actually, that's true. The well is already there. And I don't, it may be secured and locked. I'm not positive about that, but it is not fenced.
Okay, thank you.
I did not.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Please don't want people fiddling with that.
Mr. Chair, I said that one of the reasons why this is very attractive to DEQ is because the well is already there and not being used. It's not being utilized. That it was utilized back in the day whenever there was not public water throughout the park. And so the well is there and is stable, and so it's just a reference well, is what that is. And so it would be monitored for any fluctuation based upon future use of water or of drought conditions, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I will retroactively open the public hearing. We did hear of public comments. Can we remand them to the minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll do that. So those comments go, and the minutes will go under the public hearing. Any other members from the public have comments? Close the public hearing and ask for discussion among the board members. Hearing none. I will say this, this makes perfect sense, and I see no reason to oppose it, but I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
I'll second it. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Move on to number 18. Approval of co-location lease agreement with Data Path Wireless Group, LLC for communication, tower, and ground space at the county landfill site. Mr. Henkel.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Matt Henkel. I'm your British Communications Systems Manager. I'm bringing the authority today in a co-location lease agreement with Data Path. If you recall back in, at the August meeting, you approved, the board approved, the land lease agreement with Data Path Wireless at the landfill. So this is the second part of that portion of this agreement, which will allow us to lease space on the tower once the tower is constructed. Back in August, the land lease, they'll be paying us $1,000 a month. This agreement, this co-location agreement will be for $3,250 a month. So it's a net cost to the county of $2,250 a month. And that will give us the space on the, on the ground for a shelter generator and also on the tower itself.
Entertain a motion. Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we proceed. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Henkel. Item number 20. Review and approval of the county's proposed 2025 legislative priorities. And if you'll give me a minute to open that. Okay, this is an annual activity, and it's, it gives each, not just county board supervisors, but town councils, city councils, and so on, an opportunity to, well, to discuss and then document what they think would be important initiatives for the General Assembly for that session. So these things, the legislative priorities usually occur in locally October or November, during which time staff collects needs, talks to county employees, looks at other organizations to see what their legislative priorities are, and looks at organizations like VACO, and comes up with a legislative priority, which would go to, especially to our local legislators, State Senate and the House of Delegates. So this, what you have before you outlines the priorities that we have come up with. I assume everyone has looked at them. I do have some questions before we proceed. The graphic, which is very nice, it's a little bit confusing. Is that our, that's not our key priorities, because there's another page that has key priorities, I believe.
So that was just a snapshot. And again, it's all very fluid, depending on what you all would want to jockey around. But when I'd worked with Mr. LaRue, he'd wanted me to get something, maybe to take your top five. And then there's a link, that QR code you can scan, and that'll give you the full list of the priority listing. But it can all be jockeyed around, depending on what the board's pleasure is.
So it is top five, is what we're defining?
Yeah, I just kind of brought that top five in, because, and again, that can be jockeyed around depending on what you all decide to do. So any of that can be changed out. It's kind of just a mock-up example.
Yeah, okay.
Okay?
But in the text, it says top six legislative priorities, right? It's not a big deal, is it?
We added in the, it can still be adjusted.
Okay. So just going, this is a pretty important document, and it's important that I get to the General Assembly before the next session opens. Education funding, any questions on that? Fire and EMS support?
Mr. Chair? Just as a thought, to help the process along, maybe you could end up approving this subject to a group of two or something as a subcommittee to actually look at it and refine the details of it, if you wanted to do something of that sort.
Yeah, I like the idea of a subcommittee to look at it, because, I mean, the reason I was taking some time to offer some thoughts is it does strike me that it's a little bit longer than it needs to be, and we'll lose focus, you know?
Sure, absolutely. And so what ends up happening is that we introduced the items from last year plus modifications that had been submitted by other board members and then tried to think about it in terms of what you might want. And so it's really, it's the larger package, and you could pare that down, I suspect, in some ways, that would be more effective. And especially if you had a working group of a couple of members that would end up willing to do that.
Yeah. Yeah, similarly, like VATHI, I'm not sure if that's even still a valid program or it's beginning to wind down, I think, so whether that makes sense. I will ask this at the very conclusion. We have whatever number of, we have number 10, and then other legislative priorities that Bonnetot County supports. It's not clear where that fits into the whole picture. And there's some pretty important. And there's some pretty important ones there, land use, local authority, dam safety. So we just need to clean it up for things like that, I believe. And the next item, so we'll we'll table this and expect a report back from committees. That's the way you see it, Gary.
Mr. Chair, you could either table it and wait until next meeting or if you wanted to appoint the subcommittee today and go ahead and adopt it based upon the subcommittee's actions, then we could go ahead and get it to the General Assembly members sooner if you chose to do so. It's up to you, up to you ever how you want to do that. Looks like you've got a couple of members that might be interested in editing.
Yeah.
That's what it looked like. I don't know.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If my memory serves me correct, about three years ago, for this same topic, we did rewrite it. And it was much shorter and more comprehensive and as well as being more legible. So I think the the second product about three years ago was much superior to the original.
Yeah. With that in mind, how about a three-person committee that includes Mr. Michael?
I think you and I have two.
Yeah, well, we would only be able to have two, yeah. Unless we have a third person, it's not a board member. Which I think we should have a staff member. So Mr. Michael and supervisor, why don't you be willing to serve on that?
You, I probably no.
Probably no.
I probably no, just time-wise.
Okay.
Because I think it needs to have a sense of urgency. So I would defer to to one of my colleagues if you if not, I will. But if someone else feels they have the time to to put into this.
Mr. Nice, are you interested? Let's see hesitation.
Probably not. I think we've got enough going.
No, we all. Okay, so who isn't here?
Not to put you on the spot, but Mr. Clinton did a great job the last time.
He's done it for several years, but I don't mind serving on it. So you and me.
Staff member. A staff member.
Yeah, probably David or you, you're David Marmen.
I would, I would say Tiffany for editing and and beauty.
Okay.
Yeah.
That'd be nice. All right, so I'll appoint a committee to review and edit the legislative priorities as published in our in our document and to have a revised streamlined version by the next board meeting. Now, it doesn't have to be a motion. That's just chairman's privilege, I guess. So we'll get to work on that. These things were a whole lot easier before computers because you had everything in one place on a piece of paper. So let's see, have we covered everything? I think we have the TND yet to do.
Yes.
The ordinance for the battery storage facilities. Or did we postpone that one? Yeah, ordinance for the battery storage facility is postponed or just it was just for information, actually. So that does indeed move us up to the TND ordinance text amendments. Oh, there you are.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. Good afternoon. You all are probably pretty familiar by now that a property owner, agent and the owner of any property in Bonnetot County can file a petition to seek changes to the zoning ordinance. And that first comes to the board for authorization by resolution just to determine whether that particular amendment merits staff time and the planning commission's time for review and and work. And so if that is the case, then once it is authorized for a public hearing, it becomes the board's initiated text amendment at that point. And so staff drafts the advertisement for a public hearing in the future, providing flexibility to the planning commission so that staff and the planning commission can consider these requests. And so what you have before you today is a petition by Vandalay Industries Properties that represents the developers of the Harvest at Blue Ridge. They are requesting consideration of proposed amendments that are in support of changes to incorporate what we now have as a more engineered design for the Harvest at Blue Ridge. They are not intended to materially alter the approved master plan and the design guidelines that are already part of the regulations. I took a quick look at the at the master plan. So we've been working through the construction plan reviews through with VDOT, just the same as we always do with our administrative reviews, and are also working through the reviews of the subdivision plat to create the first two phases of this development. And so, of course, at that time, you all also are probably intimately familiar with how many times Delville Town Center has come back to change the text amendments or to change specific components of approvals as they've gotten further along in the process. Really, under under the in-depth reviews, the engineering review that's been going on, there are a couple of different things that, again, do not alter the approvals. So there's actually only twenty-two areas identified for duplexes and I think twenty-two total duplex units in the entire development. So that's a very small percentage. And really, I do believe that this lot question is a matter of interpretation by the zoning ordinance in terms of the lot sizes. So this is not a material reduction in the lot sizes themselves or a material increase in the amount of duplex units being proposed at the at the development at this time. So another part of that component is the review and understanding of an entry boulevard. Really, there are certain types of developments who may not benefit from on-street parking along both sides of the street. And so really, this intends to create a new type of boulevard that would not apply to the entire development as a whole, but rather just an entry feature into a TND ordinance type development. Same thing with the parking requirements. These were all things that were, in one way or another, not, again, not increasing any density, not increasing any substance use or anything like that of the development. And as a matter of fact, we've had discussions on how this particular engineer design overlaps with some of the really complicated and complex regulations the board has already approved. So that being said, you know, we'd really like to take the time as staff to be able to look at the proposed amendments, determine how they fit in with the overall TND ordinance as a whole, making sure that there are no conflicts or creating any additional densities or additional impacts to what a TND would do as a whole, any TND or as well as the Harvest at Blue Ridge, and place this on a future planning commission agenda. So that being said, I am happy to answer any questions that you have, and thank you.
Questions from Ms. Pendleton?
I do have questions, Nicole. I don't understand how we can reduce the lot size from eight to four thousand, four hundred. And that doesn't materially change the size. And if it doesn't materially change, what was intended, why are we doing it?
So I want to review this further, again, and look into this a little bit more. But when I I kind of talked through this with the engineer and, you know, previous so previous folks making zoning determinations, you know, it's it's to me, an interpretation would be it's the number of, it's the square footage per unit. Whereas I believe there was some conversation about that being the lot size per structure. So as you can see, if you have two duplex units on an eight thousand square foot lot and you're looking at having one duplex unit on a four thousand four, yeah. So so that's to me, again, they cannot increase the number of duplexes that were that were already approved. They can't go to a higher density than what was already approved in the master plan.
And I guess I have the same question with setbacks. I mean, twenty-five to six, that's a big change. And maybe you two can help me understand how that doesn't materially change the number of units you can have and the crowdedness of that development.
Well, there are other, a lot of the other units in that complex show reduced setbacks. And so I know that there was a lot of conversation between the developer and the engineer when we worked through this in the past. I I think that particular conversation warrants more discussion and review, which, again, when we get these in, we don't deep dive into the amendments until they are authorized for us to be able to take the time to do that. And so, you know, recursory, this was the result of a meeting that we had under the first and second site, the construction plan and the subdivision plat review when we when we sent comments out to the engineer.
Did they provide any
They they did not. I'm sure they would be willing to, but we were really lucky to have Matthew Lindsay on staff, who that is one of his strong points. Actually, I already asked him if you were to authorize that, that we would provide you with information, with actual visuals to be able to use for review.
Changes would look like.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep. So I don't know if that means, does that mean tabling it? Or does that mean, I don't know what that means, but I would like to see it.
There's no approval.
This is only sending it to them and authorizing you all to. This isn't approving it.
Yes.
It's authorizing you all to look into it. And then we can have, before we give a final approval, we would see, okay, I would be fine with that.
Well, the the options have been been referred to us is refer to the planning commission. And then there will be a public hearing. Or we deny it and then it won't go forward anymore.
Or table.
Or my son will be tabled. I see, most to me, I think first of all, it's the best one.
And that will allow two public hearings possibly, well, you should, the planning commission and one at the board of supervisor meetings. So we will have two opportunities for that.
Say that again.
If we if we go with option one, if we refer it to planning, there will be then two public hearings. One at the planning commission and one here. So I think that is good.
It's a better part of the hour, I think.
Does if the planning commission agrees, as we were discussing on the rendering, that's their choice to postpone their decision until they receive those renderings.
Yeah, and we would intend to not put that on a future planning commission agenda till we feel like we have addressed all of the questions that you have brought up, as well as any that we would anticipate. And the very earliest it could go would be December. I think the the developers would probably like to get an answer sooner rather than later. So we're on track for December, but that's, I'm sure, you know, pending how how much information we can get from them and how much staff can do as well.
Okay, thank you. And I was also remiss of not thanking you for your guidance earlier. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move we send this to the planning commission.
We move and approve that we take the proposed TND amendments, send them to the planning commission for more detailed study and a more detailed product. It's been moved and seconded, as I say, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I think that's a good decision. Thank you, Nicole. Allowing for the items that were postponed or pushed pushed back. There's one that I see, Ms. Alexander here. Been here most of the afternoon and we had said that we would call that for information only, but we'd love to hear from you.
It's just what we have.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. And I want to talk to you about some good news. First, I want to talk to you about our recovery court. I know that you all are somewhat familiar with it, but it used to be called our drug treatment court program. In July of this year, General Assembly changed all drug treatment court programs to recovery courts. There are sixty of them in Virginia. And the way the recovery court works and I'll pour you is what I've told you before about it. It's a it is a diversion for nonviolent drug offenders and sometimes offenders who are motivated by drugs to commit property crimes to be in a track where instead of going into jail and prison, we're into regular probation. They're on an intensive, up to two-year probation treatment track. We have selected very carefully the member, the the participants who are in it. We've had twenty-two participants so far. Oh, thank you. You could have just told me to move on. We have, we have had twenty-two participants so far. We've had three graduate. We've been in business with the recovery court since 2022. I know that doesn't sound like a lot of graduations, but that's kind of the point. It's a long and difficult process. It's much more difficult for most offenders than going through the regular track. But what it offers them is the opportunity to solve the problem instead of staying in a cycle of of drug use and criminality. And they start off out with almost daily probation and treatment meetings. They see the judge every two weeks to track their progress. If they're having difficulties, they can be sanctioned with short jail stays and then returned to probation. They can be sent to inpatient treatment if that's what's required. So our program has been very successful. Of our three graduates, we have three people who are now working, who are reunited with their families and who are much less likely to be involved in the criminal justice system again. One of my staff was at a social function and saw the parents of one of our graduates. And those folks said to her that we had saved that person's life or that the program had saved that person's life. We've had an amazing help from Blue Ridge Behavioral Healthcare. They are helping our participants with, not only with treatment, but with at times, transportation and housing, which is a great assistance to people who are on the edge of falling back into that cycle. And we have had great success with Blue Ridge and and they've been a great partner for us. And so we are moving toward having another set of graduates. We've got three people who are in the fourth phase, which is the last phase of the program. And we expect them to be graduating this winter or in the spring. And we have, currently, we have a number of folks who are in phase one, two and three. And of the fourteen folks that we have in the program, they're, they all are seeing improvement. And when we see them every two weeks in court, you can see a difference in their physical appearance in the way they address the court and the way they accept responsibility for their behavior. It's, it's been a remarkable program for all, for for us all to see. So I just wanted to tell the board about that success that we've had with that. We've, we expect, well, I should say, the state Supreme Court Drug Court report for 2023 estimates that for every individual who goes through a recovery court program versus probation incarceration, the normal track that we're used to, the state saves nineteen thousand dollars. So the citizens save nineteen thousand dollars for every person who goes through the program. We've had some people who have dropped out, who have been kicked out of the program, who have dropped out of the program. And that's normal. It happens. But the statistics also show that for people who even get partway through the program, there's great benefit. It changes their life at least to some extent. We're still seeing a huge number of overdose deaths. We have, every other month, we have probation reporting and every single session, we have one, two or more probationers who are dropped from the probation rolls because they've died in the meantime. If this program has saved a single participant's life, it's been worth it. If ten of our current current fourteen participants graduate, not only that, will that be ten people who are more likely to be successful in the future? It'll be ten people who have saved the citizens, according to the Supreme Court, one hundred and ninety thousand dollars by participating in that program. So we're very proud of it. As I said, it's it's the clerk, it's the judge, it's Blue Ridge. It's a lot of folks who have come together to make that happen. And so I just wanted to report that to the board. I'll move on now to another set of good news, which I think you heard about last session from Sergeant Bentley of the Sheriff's Office. And that is that our sheriff's department is about to embark on the use of body worn cameras. They have entered into an agreement with Axon for new tasers. And I understand there were a lot of questions about the tasers at the last session. But the the part that is of most interest to me is the body worn cameras. And that's because it is a great benefit to both officers and the citizens who officers encounter, because it enables everybody to know that each interaction is recorded on those body cams. It has been a great benefit to all various jurisdictions across Virginia who have adopted it and across the country. It's it's just a wonderful step forward for our sheriff's office and for the county and for the citizens. And that's good news for my office, too, because it provides us with a great new stream of information and evidence for prosecuting our cases. I know that a lot of people don't really know what our office does. What we do is prosecute criminal cases. We're all criminal specialist attorneys who prosecute cases. And I'm fortunate to have an office with four very experienced attorneys, including myself. And so we're looking forward to having that information because a prosecutor's duty is to do the right thing. A defense attorney's duty is to zealously represent his client, get the best outcome for his client. A prosecutor's duty is completely different. A prosecutor's duty is to find out what the right outcome is. The more information we have, the the more able we are to find the right outcome. Sometimes the just outcome in a case is for someone to go to prison for a very long time. And obviously, as prosecutors, we participate in those cases. But sometimes it's for a person to go into recovery court, and sometimes the evidence that we find really lessens our suspicion that the person committed the crime. If through the process of investigation, we discover that we don't believe that the person committed the crime or that or that his culpability is lessened, we have a duty to find the correct result for that person. This information helps us with that. It also will help us to give defense attorneys the information that they need to zealously represent their clients, which is what we want them to do. We we have great defense attorneys, and we're glad that they work hard for their clients. The downside of all this is that this is going to be in a huge flow of information into our offices. If you have an officer respond to a domestic call, for instance, the officer may go and speak to the person who called or to the to the victim, the complainant. And in the olden days, we would get a paper report and maybe some photographs. As things have gone on, we've gotten a lot more video and audio. In eighty percent of our cases, we have video or audio as well. In this domestic call, the officer will have on a body cam. So everything that he talks to that victim about will be recorded, and is our responsibility to know what is what is contained in all of that body camera evidence. If there's a second officer there for the hour and a half it takes to investigate that, and he's standing by with a neighbor who heard a scream, it's our duty to know everything that's on that officer's body cam, and that officer's body cam will be running as well. A third officer might be standing by with the purported defendant. We have to know what's on that camera as well. So that's three cameras. If there's a fourth there standing by with some children, that's a fourth camera that we have to know all the contents of that camera. It's a daunting task. I've spoken to a number of Commonwealth attorneys across the state who have implemented body worn cameras in their jurisdictions. And they have all told me that it is it is a it's a fire hose of information for their offices. It's very difficult for our offices to do. In 2019, a work study resulted in budget language that indicated that for every seventy five body cameras, a Commonwealth attorney's office should have an additional attorney because of the work, the burden of that work. Our sheriff's office is about to deploy sixty body cams. So it's going to be a tremendous amount, again, of useful and valuable information for our office, but also of information that we have to sort through and present at trial. For that reason, I've been in contact with Axon, who has a a service called Axon Premier Justice, Justice Premier, excuse me. And I intend and hope to sign up with Axon for that service. And the reason is that it is a tremendous resource for allowing us to have our own storage for all that information, to sort that information in a way that is much more time efficient. For instance, you can watch for all four of those body camera views at the same time, so that you can gather all that information at once. It also allows us to have automatic transcription of everything that happens on those cameras, as well as any other video that we put into the system, which is incredibly valuable for court. It gives us a much better platform for taking all that information and presenting it in court. And and this is this is a detail rich proposal, and I'm happy to sit down and answer anybody's questions about it. And I can get really into the weeds if I start talking about how great it is. But I guess my point is that this is a program that's going to be necessary for our office. When I first started looking at it, I thought it would be something that would be nice to have. The more I talk to other people who have had body camera systems implemented in their jurisdictions, the more I realize that it's going to be necessary. It's just something we're going to have to have. It will avoid us having to hire more staff, or at least forestall that for some period of time. And it will just make us able to continue prosecuting at the level that we demand of ourselves. I've spoken, as I said, I've spoken to many jurisdictions. I've spoken to a county of the same size as Bodatot. They are about to embark on on this Axon Justice Premier because they've tried to do it without, and we're just unable to. So having said all that, if if I'm if I enter into this agreement with Axon this year, I can secure a six month trial, which will allow us to start using this system in January, even though our budget year doesn't start until July. And then, of course, I'll be asking for an additional amount on my budget line to cover this Axon system. And I'll be entering an agreement for ten years. The thing to remember about this agreement from your point of view is there's a non apportionment clause in it, which means that if the board ever, including next year in July of 2025, decides not to apportion that those funds, then the contract resolves. So I'm not getting the county on the hook for anything, but obviously, I'm going to be asking for additional funds to support this program. It's substantially expensive. The first year is twelve thousand dollars. It goes up from there. There's a built in cost increase over the ten years of the contract. The other thing that entering that agreement this year does is it allows us to avoid an expected ten percent increase in 2025. So we'll be locked into that price structure for that ten years. That's, believe it or not, an overview. As I said, there's a lot more detail that I would just love to bore you with, because it's a very, very exciting time for Bodatot, and it is it's an exciting tool for us to use in prosecution. And so I'm I'm excited about the opportunity. And frankly, I feel that it's a necessity for us to be able to access this. So that's why I wanted to come give you a pitch today. I did start out with good news, at least, before I asked for something. So and I I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
What about training to use this? How intense is that? Does that the company provide that? Like, this is this is in the world of AI, you know? You're going to be using all this technology to compile this information. Who's going to teach us how to use it to the best of its capacity?
Axon.
They will provide that?
Yes, yes.
For all your staff?
Yes. On site. And we had, you know, we recently acquired a a file maintenance, an electronic file maintenance program through a company called Carpel. And they came and trained us. And not only did they come and give us wonderful training, but they've been incredibly responsible for any phone calls after the fact. Axon has a reputation of being very good at offering upfront training as well as being being responsive after the fact. So.
Are there data available that show these programs and these actions result in decreased crime? Different types of, like you said, kind of aftercare incarceration or recovery or or whatever? Are there data showing how this impacts localities?
I I don't I don't have that data. I don't think there are. But in talking to other jurisdictions, what prosecutors tell me is because everything is on body cam, once the defense attorney sees the camera, then cases that should revolve resolve quickly, resolve more quickly. And and so our prosecutors will have the opportunity to focus more on the more significant, more difficult cases, whereas cases that we might have used to had to argue about, we don't have to argue about anymore. So
It's right there.
As an example, you know, in the olden days, we would have an officer say, he told me he did it. And the defense attorney would be saying, or the defendant would be saying to his attorney, no, I didn't. I never said that. There's no more of those discussions anymore, because if he said it, it's on the body cam. If he didn't, it's not. So so it just streamlines everything. But as I said, it's just a lot more. It's a much much bigger flow of information from the sheriff's office. And that's what folks tell me is that it makes prosecutions more labor intensive, but also you get to the point a little quicker in most.
Thank you. I would love to hear more boring details.
Well, anytime someone wants to sit down and talk about it.
Just off top, my the price is a whole lot cheaper than.
It the yes. It's it's cheaper than hiring one person for for that, much, much less. And, you know, as I said, for instance, we have to redact sometimes if an officer calls out a person's social security number as they're calling in for information, we need to redact that before it's played in court or released to somebody. The way you would have to do that manually now is incredibly labor intensive. This program contains a redaction tool that will do that for you. And again, it gives us transcripts and again, a lot of exciting, but probably boring details for your.
Very good. Ms. Alexander, anything else? Anything from board members, questions?
And again, if anybody would like to sit down and and discuss this one on one or or, you know, ask deeper questions or let me bore them some more, I'd be happy to do that. Thanks for hearing me today.
Thank you for all you're doing. Next, we have, excuse me, citizen comment period.
Steve, I asked that Nicole give the Apex update.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman, again, members of the board. Like some other monthly updates, this one is relatively short in nature. Just checked with our development review coordinator. We have not yet received any of the external or third party review comments back in yet. Those reviews are due, I believe, I'm trying to think what day it is, either at the end of this week or beginning of next week. And then that gives the subdivision visit vision agent and zoning administrator, who is me, some additional time to intake all of that information to provide any comments or feedback that I would have to the company at that time. And so I I know that there was one question that came up about what what subdivision plaques had come in. And and I'm sorry if I wasn't more clear last month. Those were related to the dedication of the right of way that would be needed for the construction equipment to get to the site along Dagger Springs Road. And those have all been approved. They have not been signed. They cannot be signed until all the sureties have been received, posted and approved by both us and VDOT. They also will not be signed until VDOT signs off on everything. All of these, there are a lot of overlapping and interlocking parts and pieces to this very, very complicated project. And so these kinds of things do take a lot of time to go through all the different reviews and systems and conversations and checks and balances that that are located within our zoning and subdivision ordinance. So I appreciate your patience and and waiting on that information. And and if we will have more information, we'll certainly share that.
So I just just so I have this clear in my head, Apex has provided plan for you to review or revise.
Yes, yes.
Multiple. I don't know what V we're on now, but.
Well, and they're and honestly, they're different. The onsite and offset site plans are under a different count. But that's, you know, we have our permitting system to help us keep track of all that.
So you have that, and now you're waiting for the kind of auxiliary agencies or like VDOT and those things to submit those. Do you review that all as a package then, when you get everything in?
So, you know, as the zoning administrator or subdivision agent, I was just counting nineteen years in the field. I have my own kind of set away of have the way I prefer to do things, which is, you know, independent, everything on my own before I take a look at anything else that anyone else has submitted. I'll go through that page by page. Then I'll go through the individual comments one by one and really just kind of, again, complicated overlapping parts and pieces, and just want to make sure that we're anticipating anything and and have my own set with my own eyes before I start to kind of reach out and go into the other directions and see what else is provided and and what that might look like.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Now, by my reading, we are at citizens' comment period. Any members of the public wish to speak? Okay, then we'll move on to item number twenty seven, board member comments. I know the discussion, anything?
I'll just quickly say send good wishes to our colleague, Dr. Scott Horn, whose chair is empty today due to a medical situation, but not a civic, a a medical situation with a good outcome. We understand. But we wish he was here with us. I also just want to acknowledge two weeks from today is election day. That is very important for us all to remember, for us all to acknowledge, and for us all to participate. And I hope that the presentation by Tracy, the registrar, was helpful and educational to people. Hope you can share that information. And I want to just echo every time I've heard her speak, she's been very open that people can come to their office with questions. I think that's important for us to know. And I hope that we get through this process with a great outcome and in a civil manner.
Absolutely. I might mention on on the museum presentation, there was a brief mention of the Historic Greenfield group, and the point being that they are part of the discussions for the museum since they're going to be co-located on the same site. So speaking of Greenfield Committee, we submitted, I think this was our fifth submittal of various opportunities for grants. They weren't all the same, but over the years, this was number five, I think. This was a good one. It's for two hundred twenty five thousand. We have a matching, I think it's seventy five is the matching amount. But it would be for the restoration of the what's known as the kitchen and corner. It's kind of the the iconic building over on Greenfield with the massive chimney and with a cantilever overhang on on the second floor. So that's one we're targeting. We made this submittal last week. A lot of citizens worked really hard on that. And we've got our fingers crossed, hoping that this time is is the charm. We should hear it before in the end of the year. Anything else? Anything other? Anything from the county, Mr. Lurie? We good? Okay. I'll move for our I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.